Oh, they aren't physically turned powered. Right, okay. Okay, all right. So first up for the study session tonight is a review of new course proposals, changes, and deletions. Superintendent Law?
Madam Chair, members of the board, on an annual basis, our Teaching and Learning Department and the director of Curriculum Instruction, Steve Urbansky, works to review our course offerings to make sure they're aligned to current standards, they meet our students' interests, they reflect industry input, and each year, even though it isn't in our board goals that we're focusing on every course, we make adjustments, and sometimes those adjustments are enough to do a new course addition or course deletion. Typically, in November, ahead of our registration timeline, we present to the board these new courses. The public has a chance to hear about them tonight, certainly livestreamed, and then they're formally approved later so they can be included in our skipper logbook and eventually registered for. Tonight, we'll hear a few of those courses. Mr. Urbansky.
Thank you, Superintendent Law. Madam Chair, members of the board, we're pleased to be before you tonight, and as Superintendent Law mentioned, this really is a process that begins at least a year before for a number of reasons. One, many of our new courses are proposed as part of new course requirements for advanced placement or international baccalaureate. There can be program adjustments, and there can also be some administrative recommendations. So they tend to span, and some years we have more than others, and this year, we have fewer than we've had in the past few years. I should mention that we also have had some new legislation over the past several months, last spring, where as part of that, the Department of Education is also creating some framework for some new courses to be offered in the future. So we'll be coming before you as we look at adjustments to that as well. But the courses before you this evening have been through a comprehensive process. We've had administrative review, as well as department chairs, our student teaching and learning advisory, our parent teaching and learning advisory, and then, of course, we're bringing this to you. And I should mention that as we brought this to our students, as well as parents, they provided a number of insights, questions, and I think the ratio between our student group and parent group was probably about five to one for the number of questions and comments from students. So again, as you just heard in the last presentation, we really have engaged creative thinkers in Minnetoka, and we always remind them, this really is all about their experience in Minnetoka. So we're pleased to share these new courses, as well as a Vantage pathway and a few adjustments. And I'm going to let Emily Rosengren, Assistant Principal from Minnetoka High School, share the details of the courses, and she really facilitates this process with our department chairs, as well as our different program leaders. So Emily, I'll let you share.
Sure. Good evening. Hi, everyone. I know that you have materials in front of you that outline the three brand-new courses that we're proposing for next year. Each of them is meant to fulfill a need that's either not currently met or refine a need that is currently met. So the first course that you have in front of you is AP Business Management Principles. As you know, we have really robust programming for students who pursue Vantage and who want to pursue business. This course would be an AP course offering in business at the high school. So it would meet the needs of students that either are unable to accommodate Vantage into their schedule, or who want to just sort of pursue a one-off rigorous business course. There is a really strong need for that at the high school. We have so many things that kids can choose from, which is wonderful, and kids often want to try and do it all, which we talk to them about. But the idea that there are students at school who really want something more than just an introductory class, but are unable, for whatever reason, to fully fit Vantage and accommodate that into their schedule. So that's the first of our three new course proposals. The second one is band. It's a little bit of a revision and a kind of change in approach from the way that our current ninth-grade band runs. We have enough students that come into ninth-grade band that we have two sections of band. So basically, kids go into, I don't know, Hour One and Hour Two. Within that group of kids, though, there's a variety of students who want to maybe pursue music more seriously, and students who want to just be able to play for one more year. They want to get their art credit, and they are happy to be in band, but they might not consider themselves like lifelong musicians. So what our band director is proposing is that instead, when students come into ninth-grade band, they can choose a ninth-grade band option, or they could choose ninth-grade band honors, which would allow kids to kind of pick a more precise path for themselves, but also allow the teacher to provide music for kids that's more accessible to them and more fun for them, so that the students who are in band because they like to play are able to play music that makes them want to keep coming back to band, and the students who do think of themselves as musicians for life are presented with more challenging material and have a better experience, too, so that the experience is better suited to the students that are in it. But honors band would be an audition-only band, which is new for ninth grade, but there is plenty of space for everybody in band, so there's going to be room for everyone in either one or the other. The last new course is professional communication. This is a course that is kind of meant to fill a need within the English department, particularly for upperclassmen. This would be a 12th-grade English course, and it's meant to do a couple of things. It's meant to line up with our emphasis on the importance of the trades and the ways that students will need to communicate in those fields, which include, you know, technical communication skills, but also presentation skills, public speaking, listening, the kinds of things that are necessary for success in the world of work and the world of post-secondary life. This is also an interesting option because it's different than some of the other English elective requirements. It's not heavy into literature. It's not necessarily, you know, heavy into deep reading and analysis, which is great. It fills a need for kids who are not that kind of English kid, but who want to take an English elective and do something that still involves those skills, but not so much the reading of the great works. Not that those aren't, in fact, great. Any questions so far?
Yeah, Chris?
Again, in our student section, we, listening session, we had quite a few students that were in momentum, and we talked about and always think about that, you know, a lot more people are going into the trades, and we're going to need that in the next generation, and really talking about this business class and maybe the need, and I don't know if this could apply to that, but, you know, they're going to go out and be a mechanic or a carpenter, and a lot of those people are independent contractors and run their own businesses. And I know we just added, I forget the name of the course, a finance course, maybe last year or two years ago, like kind of personal finance, and is this a course that could be applied there, or maybe looking at other things, or I don't have the skipper log memorized?
What?
Maybe that's something that's already in there, but it just seems like there's probably going to be a need coming through, and love this and understand it's more for the global business side, but...
It sounds like the skills you're talking about are the skills of entrepreneurship and finance, yeah. Personal finance is definitely something that's coming. It's a course that exists already at the high school. I don't have the skipper log memorized either, but I know that's true. And I think that you're right. I think as we think about the kids moving through that program, becoming independent individuals, right? Those skills of personal finance and skills of business finance are going to be really important. Do you want to add to that?
No, I would just say that, more specifically, the AP Business Management Principles course, you may have noticed that this is a pilot for across the country. So we're really feeling privileged to be part of that, and it will be, it will not be implemented for next year fully, but we will begin with some of the piloting. So there's a lot of opportunities to really see what this looks like within our own programs.
Yeah. The other thing that's just beneath your table of new courses is a reference to a new Vantage strand for fashion design. This is a strand that's combining two courses that already exist, which is why it's not totally a new course proposal, but it's going to blend our fashion design course, Fashion Design I, along with our social studies, senior elective, global studies, and economics. Those two things coming together to give students who are interested and have pursued fashion design already, opportunities to do more advanced techniques, some fiber and textile exploration, merchandising, extended use of Adobe Illustrator. So to take that subset of students and give them some additional work via Vantage.
And then, as a result of all those new courses, we have a few title changes to respond to some of the music changes, as well as really more accurately reflecting the courses. And then, each year, this is part of a process at the high school where courses that have not run for at least three years are just revisited to see if they still fit into that larger course pathway for students. And you can see there are three courses that will be removed, one of them being web page design, but the Tonka Online version of that will continue to be available. So with that, those are the new courses and revisions that we have for you this evening, and with your support, we'll be back to you within a couple of weeks for final approval.
One other thing I just wanted to share, at Teaching and Learning, they shared that orchestra is already operating in this way that they're proposing for band, so there already is an honors orchestra that has an audition process, and that it's really worked well for orchestra, and that was one of the reasons that they wanted to do the same for band. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next up tonight, we have a review of the audit. Superintendent Law?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I've had the privilege to go through this audit reviewer, who was previewed with our Finance Advisory Committee earlier this week. Every public school district in the state works with a third party to review internal controls and ensuring that we're meeting all compliance requirements regarding finances in the district. So tonight, we'll get a preview with Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Brishwa, and our outside auditor of what they found. And just as a little teaser, not much, which is great news.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Law. And chair members of the boards, for accounting people like us, this is, it's the most wonderful time of the year, actually. So yes, we've had, finished the audit. I have to first, before I turn over to Troy and Grace, I just have to recognize Jess Hewitt, our Coordinator of Accounting and Audit extraordinaire, does a great job, and we have a team that she supervises that is equally talented and do a great job making sure everything is in just the right account, in the right amount, at the right time, in the right place. So just want to recognize their work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Troy and Grace to introduce themselves, and you have the con.
Thanks so much, Paul. Oh, that works as well. Thank you for the introduction. So my name is Troy Gable, I'm the manager for the audit this year. I've worked at the district in the past, excited to work with you again this year. And then Grace is really the project manager on the audit. Our agenda for you this evening is I'll go over some of the... Oh, yeah. Is this better? I'm usually so loud, that's why I was sitting kind of far. And so I'll go over some of the audit results. She'll certainly go over some of the trends and numbers and what those are telling us, and then I'll kind of end it going over some updates for governmental accounting standards. Maybe to start, I'd actually like to second what Paul had said about Jess and the team. This is one of the easier districts for us to work with from a kind of a process standpoint. We do have good planning processes with the district where we talk about processes, controls, procedures for up-and-coming kind of standards that are getting implemented, and then they put controls in place, and then by the time we get around to the audit, things go quite smoothly. And that is really what is going to play into a lot of the positive results that we've alluded to. So maybe to start, we do have a... You got the left hand? Yes. Okay. So for audit results, we do take a risk-based audit approach. We do try to focus on the areas that do have risk. We look at common areas that there's fraud in the industry. We look at where we're seeing it at different districts. We take that approach throughout the entire audit process, including any of the single federal audits that we do. And we certainly meet with members of the board, management each year, to get your thoughts and incorporate that into the plan as well. As a result of that process, our audit opinion we issued is clean or unmodified. That's the best type of opinion you can issue on a financial report. It doesn't sound that great, but that is the best. You wouldn't want a modified or an adverse opinion. This essentially means we're able to support everything we tested. We didn't run into anything where we couldn't get a reasonable modus support to say, yes, this number is correct, the accounting for this was done properly. Yellow Book compliance, this is just the result of you being a government, we have to look for if you violated any laws, regulations for contracts or grants that would have a significant impact. We didn't note any of those. And then internal controls, we don't have any internal control issues that would rise to the level of a material weakness, which means a number was materially incorrect, or a significant deficiency, which would be, think of like an internal control item that, if it doesn't go well or continues the way it is, potentially could lead to a material issue. It's quite rare for us not to have either of those, or one or a couple of those for a district this size. So I would say that that is commendable and really reflective of the proactive approach to controls that the district appears to take. And then for the single audits, we do not have any recommendations or findings here either. We take an approach using the compliance supplement. It gives us a kind of a nice list of things that we need to be looking at, from allowable ability to reporting, procurement, and for every single thing we test, we have to make sure controls are documented over that. We didn't find any issues with that. That is also quite uncommon. Usually, there are procurement issues and time and effort issues that we see at Minnesota school districts. And then Yellow Book compliance findings. This is really getting at Minnesota legal compliance. This is a bunch of guides we have to go through to test, say, specific laws that the state requires for all audits. Oftentimes, you'll see, you know, prompt payment of bills pop up here, or other things with like bids and quotes. We didn't run into any issues this year. Any questions on audit results? All right. The general fund balance activity, this graph, certainly important when you're looking at kind of running the budget and management of a district. Fund balance is essentially what you have left at the end of the year, or maybe kind of your contingency plan if you have unexpected expenditures, or anything like that. So unassigned fund balance, you can see at the end of 2024, ended at 10.27% of the annual expenditures, and total fund balance for the general fund was at just under 13%. So about six weeks of operations. Obviously, you guys have budgeted spend downs of those from year to year, something to watch as you get close to that 10% range, which I'm sure you're factoring into budgets and whatnot going forward. And then, we also have the change in enrollment from 2015 to 2024. You can see that this is a very strong enrollment for a district that is as mature as Minnetoka due to kind of the improvements of the buildings and the increased capacity that you've been able to create. That's not something you often see with districts that are a little bit more mature. A lot of times, you see stagnant or decreasing enrollment, which certainly you could face in coming years, but obviously, it helps with, from a budgeting and growth standpoint, to not have to deal with that. All right. I will turn it over to Grace to go over some of the financial numbers and graphs, and then I'll come back and help you with the standards.
This is a summary of the general fund expenditures by object code. We have presented here the final budget for each of those object codes that we then compared to the actual expenditures for '24 for those object codes. I want to highlight first that the district does an extremely great job at allocating the budget according to each of the nature of the underlying costs. As you can see, for obviously those two larger object codes, salaries and employee benefits being very, very close to the budgeted amounts that they have here. With that being said, total expenditures of the general fund were only 0.7% over the budgeted amount. You can see here that the object code that was the most over budget was purchase services. This was due to increase in transportation costs, increase in repairs and maintenance throughout the year, and increase in student field trips. Up next, we have the operating results for the food service fund. It shows the revenues and expenditures for the past five fiscal years. To start, too, for the food service fund, the free meals bill was in effect for fiscal year 2024, which made all lunches and breakfasts free for all students. Historically, Minnetoka has not operated a breakfast program, so as a result of this bill, revenues and expenditures increased. With that being said, though, the district runs its food service fund extremely well, as you can see with expenditures being very close to in line with revenues. A lot of the times, you'll see at a district in the state of Minnesota, they have a transfer from the general fund to cover deficits in the food service fund if the district were to spend more expenditures than revenues, which Minnetoka does not have that, so just another great way to say that, you know, it's operating its food service program extremely well. Obviously, this is positive, as if there were ever any emergency purchases or capital projects that needed to take place, the district would be able to do so with ease. Here's a graph summarizing the total meals served to students for the past five fiscal years based on categories. So you have the reduced meals, free meals, and full-priced meals. As I said in the previous slide, with the free meals bill, there were no full-priced meals. In fiscal year '24, the only sales revenue that you'll see in the food service fund relate to à la carte sales and adult meals. So going forward, there won't be anything presented in that full-priced meal similar to what we saw during the COVID-19 pandemic, when all meals were also free. Continuing with operating results, we have the community service fund, again, showing the trends in revenues and expenditures for the past five fiscal years. Every year, the district has continued to see an increase in traction and participation in its community service fund, with more enrollment and classes being offered. As a result, you can see revenues are increasing every year, and with that increase in revenues, you're seeing expenditures increasing in line with that in order to keep up with the enrollment and the number of programs that the district's operating. We did want to highlight that fund balance the past three fiscal years in the community service fund has continued to increase, and that's just in relation to the increase in participation and the students enrolling in those. Up next, we have the balance sheet for the governmental funds for the district, which you all should have copies of. We've touched a little bit already on the general food service and community service fund, but also wanted to highlight a few things related to capital projects and debt service mainly related to the district's fund balance. Here, you can see all of the fund balances listed out for all of the district's funds. Like I said, we just want to highlight the capital projects and debt service fund on this slide. You can see for both of those funds that the fund balance is restricted, which means it's restricted for a specific purpose or use. So in the capital projects fund, you can see that it's restricted for projects that are already set by the district, as well as long-term facilities maintenance. And then in the debt service fund, you can see that the total fund balance is restricted for debt service, so that would be related to debt service payments. Up next, this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the district's governmental funds. The previous slides showed the trends in the general food service and community service fund, but again, we just wanted to highlight in comments about the capital projects and debt service fund. For expenditures, you can see capital projects has a large capital outlay expenditure that relates to repairs and maintenance that needed to take place on the district's facilities throughout the year, as well as activity related to the Vantage momentum building, which was completed in March of '24. So that relates to the capital projects fund. And then in the debt service fund, for expenditures relates to principal, interest, and fiscal charges, which correlates directly to the bond documents for the district's outstanding debt. This is a continuation of the statement from the previous slide. It's just another section for the district's other financing sources. What we wanted to comment on here is the capital projects fund. There was debt that was issued during fiscal year '24. There was the issuance of GO facilities maintenance bonds, the Series 2023B of $10,785,000, as well as the certificates of participation, Series 2024A, of $1,764,998. So just wanted to highlight that activity in the capital projects fund as well. This is the statement of net position for the district's internal service funds, so that's related to the self-insurance accounts, which provides health and dental benefits, as well as the OPEB revocable trust fund. You can see that the statement of net position has consistent activity related to the prior year. However, there was a decrease in net position, which I'll cover in the next slide. This is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, again, related to these two funds. In the self-insurance account, that relates again to the health and dental benefits. That had a decrease in net position this year due to increase in health costs related to inflation, as well as higher-than-normal incidences of serious illness claims. So that's what related to the decrease in that fund. And then in the OPEB revocable trust fund, that also saw a decrease in net position related to normal withdrawal for benefit payments, as well as a decrease in investment earnings from the prior year, which you can see presented in that comparative column between 2024 and '23. Here, we have some comparative data from the Minnesota Department of Education for expenditures of benefits for preelementary through secondary education. The 2024 data is not available yet, but we have here presented the '23 data. As you can see, in total, Minnetoka spends less than all those statewide averages, which is the column for all districts, seven county metro area, and an enrollment greater than 4,000 students. I wanted to highlight that the district does spend a little more on regular instruction than the rest of the statewide averages. However, they do spend less on maintenance, transportation, and other administration costs, so still below in total the statewide average, and obviously, we'll come, circle back to this in 2024 and compare that, but historically, that has always been the trend with Minnetoka, and that just goes, you know, to highlight the budgeting and spending that the district does. And, oh, did you want to...
I was just going to comment, especially with the changes that have happened, you know, post-pandemic, and just inflation that we've seen in the last few years, it's nice to be able to see if you're able to kind of keep these in control and stay still below the averages.
Pass it back over to Troy to talk about exciting GASB standards.
All right. First up, I'll actually touch on the one that we implemented this year. You may... You may see there's a little bit more in terms of additions and depreciation related to grouped assets. So if you did notice that in the fixed asset footnote, that's really related to things like maybe laptops, information technology, things like that. You could maybe have some more furniture. It's essentially groups of smaller assets that in the past wouldn't have met your capitalization threshold. GASB changed one word in an implementation guidance from 2015, basically from could to should, and now you have to do that going forward if it meets your capitalization policy. So it works just like any other fixed asset. It's essentially just trying to capture some of that on the government-wide financial statements. Upcoming in 2025, you'll have GASB 101, which is for compensated absences. This will have the effect of increasing the district's compensated absences liability potentially significantly, now given that's only on the government-wide statements. And what it's having the district do is create an estimate for, think of like safe and sick time or sick leave. Currently, you'd only accrue the portion that would be paid out upon somebody leaving or getting terminated potentially, and you'd basically book that severance portion. or getting terminated potentially, and you'd basically book that severance portion that you'd actually pay them on that date. And now they're going to say, well, let's look at the rest of that and come up with how much we think they're likely to use before they retire or leave. And that will now also get booked, and you'd basically base that on historical trends with retirees or maybe people switching positions or leaving the district. So it'll be a little bit more work, increase the liability, but you're not paying any more than you've been paying in the past. GASB 102, certain risk disclosures. This won't have a very large change for the district. You don't have a ton of risks that would have to be disclosed this way. If you started investing all your money in one particular investment or something, we'd have a few extra sentences in some of your footnotes. And then going forward to 2026, they are changing a few things for the financial statement model. So it'll change some of the MDNA language that you see at the beginning of the report, and it'll also make it a little bit more clear where we should put budgetary schedules. So we moved some of those this year in anticipation of that. But currently, there's options as to where to put those, and that's just going to streamline where they show up for all organizations. So, but the information that you'd have available now will still be available then. It'll just be on a different page. Any questions on those? All right. And lastly, we just want to thank everybody for having us out to present these results. As Paul said, this is, this is kind of the time where we get to actually say, hey, here's the results of our testing, get to share that with the boards, communities. And so we always appreciate the opportunity to do that, and we are also open to any questions you might have at this time.
I'd just like to make a comment related to the audit. And just to remind you, especially for the new board members or first time through, the auditors don't work for superintendent law and the administration. They work for you and the community. So their report is directly to you on how we're doing. And the thing I want, just want to mention is that you are well-served by Clifton Larson Allen. They've been the district's auditors for a number of years, and they continually send us very qualified CPAs to audit our books. They, even though they found nothing, doesn't mean they didn't put us through the wringer. You know, so they really look at everything in depth and do a really good job in that regard. So you're, I just want to say you're being well-served by this team, but also Clifton Larson Allen over the years.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, one highlight of that is part of the reason we don't have the significant findings to report to you at a meeting like this is each year we go through kind of an internal control assessment, and we give best practice recommendations for areas that fraud is up and coming, areas that we've had problems at other clients, and the district is responsive to that and always implements that stuff. And that's really what leads to us not having significant control problems. And this year, actually, we implemented a new auditing standard the last couple of years where we took a little bit deeper dive into your IT, and you guys also didn't have any significant issues with your IT environment either, so.
Thank you. I had one question. So I noticed that there were reduced meals for 2024. What is a reduced meal in this situation where we have free breakfast and lunch?
So a reduced meal, so what that is, is you have two programs going on. You have the federal program you've always had, and then you have the state program that is now on top of that. And so you still have students that qualify for free, and you still have students that qualify for reduced federal meals. Now, in this case, when you have a reduced federal meal, the state is coming in and paying that difference, and they're still going to give you the funding that you don't get for the meals. Same thing, if you have a free meal, whether it's free federally or free through the state, you're still getting reimbursed for that. And potentially, we could also update that to just essentially show the number of meals, if they're all going to be free going forward, as far as like overall compensation to the district, it's not.
Thank you. Dan?
Just more of a comment than a question, but thank you, folks, for this report. And Paul, thank you and your entire team for the work that put us in this position. Like, I think, I don't know much about auditing, but it sounds like a clean or unmodified opinion is pretty great. And I think that the folks in the community, the folks who help fund our district, should have a lot of faith in our finance department. And when we're presenting numbers, when we're receiving numbers at the board, be they positive, be they negative or posing challenges to us, I think we can all comfortably, be comfortable relying on the fact that they're accurate, that they're free from error, and that our folks in the district are doing a great job with the public's funds.
I would echo that, especially that slide that showed what we spend on like administrative compared to everybody else, and then to the direct instruction in the classroom compared to everybody else. Like, that's a very powerful set of data there. Patrick?
Similar comment to what you've heard. Again, thanks to everyone for your efforts. I think just to bring it up a level of abstraction, you know, in our private lives, we hear the word audit, we all kind of panic, like, oh, no, I'm in a lot of trouble. What I, what I take from this presentation over the years, however, is that these clean or unmodified audits are a way of Clifton Larson Allen saying, we've looked at the finances, we've looked at how you keep your books as a district, and essentially, those books are an accurate depiction of the finances of the district. Is that fair?
Yes, that is correct.
Because I just want, I want our community to know we have some challenges coming up, but at least from the perspective of, of your audit, we should be comfortable relying on the numbers are accurately showing us, in the books are showing us what's really true about our finances.
Yes, I would, I would certainly agree with that. And then maybe one more time emphasize, it's, you know, an unmodified or clean opinion is not so rare as having no internal control findings that rise to the level of material weaknesses or single audit findings. And maybe just in terms of the federal funding recommendations, when you do have one of those, for the next two years, it actually doubles the amount that we're required to audit, so it saves the district money to have good controls because we're required to test less and look at less. And so they just have what you call a low-risk and a high-risk auditee from a federal kind of expenditure standpoint. And Minnetonka's been a low-risk auditee for quite some years.
All right. Thank you again. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us.
Next up, we have an MTSS update. Superintendent Law?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, multi-tiered systems of support is actually one of our school board goals and the strategy we use to meet the unique needs of every learner. Our district has been implementing MTSS as best practice, recommended by the state and common across the country. We have a report tonight from Associate Superintendent Dr. Amy LaDuce, Executive Director of Student Services, Dr. Christine Breen, and Director of?
Nope. I'm just.
Oh.
She's just helping us.
Sorry.
She's just tech support tonight.
I had to get out. She fooled me. Just Dr. LaDuce and Dr. Breen. We'll be providing an update on how we are moving our MTSS initiative forward from the building level out to the, district level out to the buildings and into the classroom. Dr. LaDuce?
Can I have this stop for 24 seconds?
Wow.
That's a windows update.
Uh huh. There we go. Superintendent Law, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and provide you with an update and highlights from priority areas for our MTSS Year Three Action Plan.
As you all know, we have been at this a long time, starting in the 2018-19 school year. Many of you were with us when we did that, the mental health evaluation with Dr. William Mitchell, all the way to today, implementing Year Three of our MTSS Action Plan in partnership with CARRY. We remain steadfast in our support for ensuring all students get what they need in our system every single day.
Again, this is a familiar image. It illustrates our MTSS framework, and it really also shows that layering and the importance of that solid Tier One for all students. And when students need more time, more support, or more challenge and stretch, we're always layering that on. But that that most important element of MTSS is ensuring that robust Tier One or Core. As we go through our Year Three Plan, there are four core areas for our goals. You'll see here some of the highlights, infrastructure and support, assessment and decision-making, and multi-level instruction. And we'll be speaking to the updates in each of those areas of our action plan. So the first area is the teams section. We've continuously provided you with updates on this, but as you know, a multi-tiered system of support framework has four levels of team. That district-level team that oversees the entire process and provides guidance, the work at the buildings, the teacher teams, individual teachers, and SST. So we'll provide a brief update on each of those. Before we do that, though, we do want to just remind you of how those teams work together with the framework and that the data and information about students and their learning is really at the core of all of the work of this system and how we're working, as Christine mentioned, to ensure that the system is meeting the needs of each of our students in those core areas. So as we look at our district leadership team, one of our core areas of focus this year is fidelity of implementation. This is, again, making sure that we're implementing evidence-based practices at the classroom level, that building teams are looking at the right data and looking at it in the right ways, and that the district leadership team has measures of fidelity to make sure that the system is working. Additionally, we have evaluation of our implementation on our goals this year. A self-assessment was conducted by our district leadership team in August. And as we go throughout the year, we're working with the CARRY team to determine what are the most important areas for us to monitor and what other measures or information do we need to ensure that we are fully implementing the system the way it's intended. Additionally, we are looking at system data and reviewing our progress, analyzing that, really looking at, first and foremost, the effectiveness of our Tier One. You know, do we have 80% of our students demonstrating that they're learning at or above grade level? And of those students that start the year on track, are they showing the appropriate amount of growth and ending the year on track, having learned what they needed to in our system? And then finally, ensuring that we're providing the guidance and support that buildings need to successfully implement this work. The building leadership teams really have become more focused and more confident in the work that they're doing. We have our building agendas that we have provided for them that really follow the cadence of the work throughout the year, what we're assessing, when, how that should be looked at, and what else they should be monitoring at their building. With that, we have that schedule for that work to happen, and we're providing supports for those teams so that we're ensuring each team at a common level is looking at data in a similar way. As we mentioned at the retreat on Monday, this is a work in progress, but we feel really good that we've taken a good step forward in this area, especially with access to more data consistently, consistently in an easy, accessible format. We've had the data, we've been using it, but it's the access to it through the new EduClima system. And then it's monitoring the building progress. How are students at that building doing? How are they doing at various grade levels in programs across student demographic needs or demographic groups, and what are the needs of students? And then making sure that at the building level, they're allocating their resources where their greatest needs are, whether that's additional intervention support, needing more tools, or needing more professional learning. The PLCs, then, are those grade level and course teams that are working collaboratively, really to implement our teaching and learning model. With this, at the elementary level, we're focused in the area of literacy as our core area. Teachers, of course, are also working on math and social and emotional learning. In our content areas, our PLCs really have been working on refining and deepening the work of applying a true PLC process, where we're looking at, what do we want all students to know? What are our essential learnings? How are we evaluating those? And how are we adjusting instruction to be responsive to those individual student needs?
And then that last team, SST. We continue to partner with Dr. Elena Zhang from CARRY. She's, she's no longer at CARRY, but we, we are not letting her go. We continue to contract with her. She has created five training modules. And what's amazing this year is these teams are watching them at SST. And in November, at SST, we would have typically had a backlog of students that we would have been talking about. But because of the structures we have been able to put in place, they're talking about these kiddos at PLC, at their department meetings. And so there's time at SST to do learning work, to really engage in the learning work that Dr. Zhang is putting together. And this learning work is really ensuring that we are implementing a systematic Tier One and early Tier Two, and utilizing and making database decisions using our data warehouse, EduClima, and our early warning system prior to engaging in review at SST.
Our second area of need is professional learning, and this has been an important element since we began this work. This fall, one of our emphasis was on deepening the shared understanding of Tier One and what that meant and what individual's teacher's role is in that instructional level. This fall, we had an opportunity during our opening to talk about Tier One with all teachers again and to help continue to connect those dots. We also then followed up with our elementary teachers through the K5 grade level meeting that we held during workshop week, and really had an opportunity to just deepen that understanding and make sure that all teachers understand their role, not only in that core instruction, but that intervention and extension as prevention from students needing more support after the end of the unit or after the learning is finished. Additionally, our content area teachers, so 612 teachers who do not teach reading, and our elementary specialists have been really doubling down to deepen their understanding of those PLC practices that directly impact their classroom instruction day-to-day and their responsiveness to their students. You're looking at a picture of our MHS teachers collaborating during the learning on November 1st. On both professional learning days, teams of teachers developed meaningful assessment practices that were focused on building hope, efficacy, and achievement, and they had the opportunity to work with Nicole Dimage both of those days so that they could do some learning, work with that learning, and then come back and deepen that learning. We're fortunate to have her local and that she's always willing to be a support to our Minnetonka staff. Additionally, they continued work with expanding their Tier One instructional practices. So we had a variety of sessions. Some were in common for all teachers, some were teacher choice, depending on the level. But the goal was really focusing on how are they differentiating instruction? How are they engaging students? How are we deepening learning in every classroom? Additionally, in the area of professional development, our Director of Teacher Learning, Sarah White, every fall works with the launch of PLCs at the buildings. Each year, we update what we call our one-stop shop. This is where teachers are housing their goals, their notes from their team, the assessment plans they're putting in place, and it's a way for teachers to both interact with the teacher instructional coaches, but also their principals on what is the work of their PLC and what progress are they making. This year, in order to help really support and deepen the MTSS work, we've created a link in there that gets them to all of these resources on the screen so that it's both front of mind and makes the work easier as they're trying to coordinate and connect the dots across the areas. And then last- And then lastly, in the area of professional development, is our work around literacy. All of our teachers of reading from early childhood to grade 12 and sale who teach reading have continued that professional learning. We've completed Day Three and Day Four of the five days to meet the state requirement so far this year. We've really, we're working on multi-syllabic words and spelling and fluency, which are great indicators of comprehension and really important to that transition from learning to read or decode to really understanding and being able to use reading to learn. Additionally, on that fourth day, we focused on vocabulary and syntax at the word level. So how they're putting words together and really some of that knowledge of grammar that sometimes we don't, haven't associated in the past with an important skill within reading. And both of those days, in addition to content, really focus on making connections to their curriculum, because, again, all the learning is independent of a curricular resource. It's about best practice in structured literacy. And then thinking about what are those applications they can carry back to the classroom? And then finally, we have worked with teachers on understanding the differentiation framework that I'll talk about in a few minutes. As we move into our core area two, assessment and decision making, our first area need is Tier One assessment. And on Monday, we had a great opportunity at the Board Retreat to talk more deeply and share information about the implementation, both of EduClima, as well as how we're advancing data literacy with our teachers as we support them in accessing assessment data, understanding it, and then using it to make those instructional decisions. And we're able to update you that nearly all of our staff has had some basic navigation training, and then that we've done targeted training or customized training with targeted groups, depending on their role and if they're serving as a teacher leader. As we continue with this area of need, we also are working on Tier Two and Tier Three assessment and decision making. And this year, one of the areas that we've been able to focus on is elementary math and standardizing both our screening and progress monitoring in grades two through five. We have all of our schools using the same screening tools this year, and so that's a good step forward. All students took NWEA math assessments as they have for years. This year, though, we also added our FastBridge Automaticity Assessment. And automaticity is done in a whole group setting, so it's not labor-intensive. It takes about 10 minutes to do that as a whole class. And similar to FastBridge reading fluency, automaticity reflects the level of proficiency that a student has by measuring their rate and accuracy as they work to solve math problems. Students who were below grade level on the NWA also completed assessment called AMATH, which is in the FastBridge suite. And this allows us to see students' strengths and their needs by math topic and helps us guide instructional decision making. With that, we also then worked with our Director of Advanced Learning on this area. And much like we look at students who need more challenge and more push in the area of math, we looked at how can we evaluate where students are with risk so that we're serving like students regardless of the building that they're in? So it's not left up to are there more or less students at a single site, but what's the criteria? And this chart really identifies levels of risk and how we're using or triangulating results to say, how are students doing with their math? And then allowing us to determine what's the appropriate response based on their overall picture. In addition to looking at risk levels, we also know that sometimes students are on the bubble. And so a file review process was put in place to be able to really look at the assessments and the work that they're doing day-to-day in the classroom as their learning states standards. Finally, once the needs were all evaluated, our math interventionists worked with principals this year to identify which students should receive some additional services outside of the classroom for Tier Two and Tier Three. And the great thing about FastBridge, when we have that automaticity data and that AMATH data, it helps really target and align evidence-based interventions, which is one of the areas that we've been working on as a part of our MTSS plan. And so we also then can provide that intervention and progress monitor students to make sure they're making the expected progress. As we move forward, more of this work will shift to our grade level PLCs, and we're continuing to identify research-based resources that we can and should use to meet a variety of needs. We also will look to expand this both into our early primary math as well as our middle school as we move forward. But grades two through five were a great starting point. In the area of reading, we talked extensively also about our elementary literacy screening on Monday at your retreat. This slide really depicts the work we're doing with our early reading assessments, again using the FastBridge suite with our kindergarten and first grade learners, and how we're leveraging then that data as leading data to guide instructional decisions or where we may need to gather more information and do diagnostic work regarding individual students. And in grades two through five, we're also using our FastBridge fluency data. We're looking at needs of students based on that data to identify students who may need, again, support in the area of, could be phonics and word recognition, it could be fluency, it could be comprehension, and are students who need us to challenge and stretch them because they're at or above grade level already, to ensure that, again, we're meeting those individual needs in the classroom. And teacher teams leverage their PLCs to do this work in both, in literacy at all levels. And then our last area is multi-level instruction. And the first area of need, or the first goal, was the district developing and implementing our district literacy plan. As you know, this was developed last spring, was posted on our website in the summer to align with MDE's template for district literacy plans. In support of that literacy plan, though, we also developed a literacy instructional model. And this model is really meant to provide guidance and support to our teachers. It aligns our curriculum to instructional structures of whole group and small group and collaborative and independent time. It also guides resources for the various areas and the five pillars of literacy and supports teachers in making differentiated instructions within small group and independent times. Helps put all of it together in a usable way for teachers. And then finally, this is the differentiation framework that was developed more as a flowchart, really to create clarity about roles and the process, you know, from when teachers screen students to how they look at that data using the tools that we were just looking at, to when and how to engage our reading specialists, and when students aren't making progress, how and when we move them through that SST process to determine, do they need more intensive support, or is a special education evaluation appropriate to best determine how to meet their needs? And so now I will turn it over to Dr. Breen to talk about this area of need as it relates to social and emotional learning.
Amy can take a breath now. That was a lot of information. So a really large area of focus in Year Three has been around SEL in our Year Three of our action plan. At the elementary level, a lot of the work has been focused on looking at our curricular resources. What are we utilizing at? What are we looking at in terms of understanding the implementation fidelity across our systems, our six elementaries? Learning what gaps exist in student need, what the curriculum is actually accessing, needing, and discussing what the best service delivery vehicle is for SEL. Minnetonka utilizes responsive classroom as a frame in our elementary schools. Some of our, sorry, I should have moved closer. Some of our elementaries implement responsive classroom more wholly than others. Additionally, social thinking is embedded within every elementary school. It is a foundation in our Tier One. We utilize that vocabulary at every elementary school. And Olveas is additionally utilized in our belonging efforts around the bullying prevention. SEL has historically been delivered in part through our health curriculum at the elementary. That said, health is only delivered once every six-day cycle at the elementary, which makes it challenging to deliver a systematic Tier One. And so in connecting with elementary teachers, health chairs, they've really been kind of voicing a need for a more robust Tier One. And so that really led to kind of the next part of what I'd like to share with you today that we've been working on. I've also been partnering, I should state, with Steve Urbansky around the national health standards. So Steve has been working with the health chairs. Because SEL has been paired so closely with health, Steve and I have been connecting around that service delivery. And there are national health standards that he's working through with the health chairs to write new curriculum. The Minnesota Department of Education just dropped a bomb on them that they will be coming out with new health standards here in the state of Minnesota by the end of the year. So we'll see if that happens. But he and his team are going to continue to align with the national health standards, assuming Minnesota will align closely with those as well. So Steve and I are working in conjunction together to move the Tier One forward.
Previously, health standards were a local decision, and they encouraged us to lean into the national standards. So that will be a change in Minnesota.
So this led to some exploration with needing to look at some potential other Tier One opportunities. So as Amy and I have shared, a systematic and healthy Tier One is imperative for an entire MTSS system to function effectively. SEL Tier One is no different. Another intended outcome of this work is a standard treatment protocol. So a standard treatment protocol is a protocol utilized at SST to assign interventions in a uniform and systematic way to similarly situated students utilizing data-based decision-making. Middle and high school SEL service providers did this work. I've shared this, kind of screenshot the middle screen. We did this work this summer, and I'll share a little bit about that in a couple of subsequent slides. And finally, another intended outcome, as Amy has talked about, fidelity. We are working with CARRY this year on fidelity of MTSS across all of our systems. So that's no different for our SEL work as well. At this time, following the initial work led by Annie Lumbar Benson and her SEL small group team last year, as well as Dr. Ellen Swanson from CARRY, as well as all the SEL service providers and assistant principals from the elementary, this fall, we have selected three curriculum resources to trial. These are the schools partnered on the screen, and they are well underway in their planning and training of staff. So we have created data assessments to be completed by staff before and after as a means of determining the efficacy of the Tier One. We can also utilize fall, winter, and spring SABERS, but we wanted more granular data at the classroom level. We want teacher feedback. We need to understand the ease of use with Tier One. Tier One needs to be plug-and-play. So we need to understand the efficacy of Tier One and the ease of use for our teachers. It has to be able to fit into existing routines and structures, and it really can't be an add-on. We don't want our teachers to feel like it's something in addition to what they're doing. We do have to consider our immersion. Our immersion is partnering with us in these pilots. We do have Chinese teachers volunteering, we have Spanish teachers. And some of these curriculum resources are translated, and some of the materials are in Spanish, some are in Chinese. So those will be decision points for us as well. At the secondary Tier One, in the middle school specifically, they continue to implement their priority lessons using Be Good People through core content rotations and through advisory. Be Good People is an evidence-based curriculum, and while they've been utilizing it for a couple of years, I know the middle school counselors are really interested in looking at another opportunity. Dr. Ladue had an opportunity to hear about another opportunity or option for a potential Tier One at a conference she was at. And so it's with Dr. Clay Cook. He created Character Strong, which you just saw on a different slide. So maybe some additional opportunities for middle school folks as they're looking to maybe revitalize their Tier One. They also utilize Tier One or implement Tier One through the health curriculum at middle school as well. I was just, oh, as we potentially shift into the middle school model in '25, '26, if that moves forward, Tier One could be implemented through seminar. So that would give a really nice avenue for Tier One SEL to be delivered. And then at the high school, Jeff and his team have built a very robust all-aboard, which he is very proud of. He implements his Tier One SEL through that. He also does it through morning announcements. It also is through their embedded health, which happens once every three weeks, depending on the grade level. Additionally, grade level counselor meetings, one-on-one individual meetings, and then his building-wide culture. You all follow him on Instagram. He does a lot of social building, social emotional things for his high school staff. Okay. All right, Core Area Three, continuing with this. You all had the opportunity to hear from Dr. Riga and Amy on Monday, and I genuinely cannot share how excited we are with this work. I was saying to Amy, I was typing up my notes for today, and just the excitement we have is maybe a little bit nerdy, or we're just very excited about the work that has happened. It's been a labor of love from so many stakeholders, and it is just so exciting to see it come to fruition. So we shared about the early warning system. What this means is that our counselors at our middle and high school receive emails every Monday morning at 6:00 a.m. I know they set their alarms every Monday. They are so excited to get up and read the emails. So they get four separate emails, one for attendance, one for discipline referrals, one for failing grades, and then one for SABERS around SABERS testing time. So Sally, at the Board Retreat, you asked the question, how do we know who's using EduClima? How do we know utilization? And it kind of, it made me smile because it made me think of, as I've been leading these groups, and I'm sitting in front of counselors, and I've been meeting with them very frequently because this is all-new learning for them, and I'd be asking questions, okay, did you get your email? Did you open your email? What'd the email say? How'd you use it? Silence, right? Silence is not a great thing. So I would walk away and think, they're not using it. And then all of a sudden, I went back one day, and it totally changed. They were asking questions. What does this mean? I actually can't get in, I forgot my password. Can I reset it? This took me here, this took me here. What does this, what does this all mean? And then it was, I don't want it on a Friday morning. They used to be getting it on a Friday morning. They wanted it on Monday. And so in that moment, I knew they were using it. They were using it for something meaningful. That was an exciting moment. So they are using it. Are we where we want to be? No. Have we made great progress? Yes. Let's go to the next slide. So this is a screenshot of what the counselors see. So they get those emails, which really then sends them into EduClima. They have to actively go into EduClima. This is an example of a data wall for an eighth-grade counselor at MME. This is what this counselor sees. This is his roster, half of it. You can see, right here is the student data. This is the mine saver. Over here is the teacher's. You can see they're very different ratings, right? They're rated very differently. That's not atypical. And then you can see, this student has flagged for multiple fails, significant attendance, this student has multiple fails, extension, attendance. So that is what they see. That's how they're reading it. And then they have to dig in further. Just reading that doesn't tell them what to do, they need to dig further. So a kiddo may flag for significant attendance, but they might have been on vacation. Then they're also going to flag for fails because they missed two tests while on vacation. So just because a kiddo flags doesn't mean we automatically need to put them in a Tier Two group for additional support. So these So these counselors now have the resources, those thresholds are set. We've identified what those thresholds are. And by "we," I mean principals, assistant principals, Dr. Riga, Amy, and I participated in conversations with counselors around when do we want to be notified? When do we need to be concerned about a student with regards to attendance, discipline, and grades? And then Sabers, we set those thresholds. Go to the next slide. So we set some decision-making rules. Sometimes our counselors just want to be told what to do. Okay, so I see this, now what? So we gave them some kind of guidelines. So if a student has three or more minor flags, so a minor concern in any one of those four areas, they may require a Tier Two intervention. If they have two or more significant flags, they may require a Tier Two intervention. I continue to say "may" because it's not an absolute, it's not automatic. Those counselors know those kiddos, might call a family, say what's going on, they might be going through a divorce, they flagged because of that. So these are some decision-making rules that help our counselors at their PLC have the conversation. These conversations are not yet happening at SST. You can go to the next slide. So again, this is the standard treatment protocol all of our counselors are utilizing to make decisions on students. When they get those thresholds, they're digging into the data, they're having robust conversations at PLC, they're utilizing the standard treatment protocol to make decisions on students, they're placing them in the appropriate Tier Two intervention, tracking data on how the intervention is working, coming back at PLC, reviewing that data, and if that intervention is not working, coming to SST to then discuss, now what? Might we change interventionist? Might we change intervention? Might we move to Tier Three? Or might we move to a special education referral? Go to the next slide. This is just an example, this is EmpowerU, this is one of our Tier Two opportunities that we can choose from. Based on Sabers, it will tell you which of the four Tier Two interventions you might choose for that student. So are they struggling in the area of friendship? You're going to put them in a Tier Two friendship group. Are they struggling with building confidence? That's the one you would choose for that student. Are they struggling with emotional regulation or habits for lasting change? Think of habits for lasting change as executive functioning. We just don't use executive functioning, middle school kids, doesn't really resonate with them. But then, if you, if I were to give you the high school example, it doesn't say friendship. Tenth-grade boys don't want to work on friendship. So it says like peer relations or like sustainable, like relationship sustainability, something like that. So it is age-appropriate. So the subscales within Sabers identify and support what Tier Two you choose. And you can go to the next slide. And this is the work that the middle school has done. They have built out the entire year of groups and interventions. And they call them waves, when to start, when to end, based on reporting periods, grades, Sabers times. So the amount of work that has been done by our counselors, our school psychs, our social workers, has been immense. I'm super proud of them. And this was just an example of the work and the foundation that has been laid and then implementing it. So I just wanted an opportunity to share how this work looks in the area of SEL as we think about our board goals today.
So as we think about going forward, you can tell we continue to be very enthusiastic about not just the work that we're doing, but the progress that we're making. And echo Christine's point, obviously, there are a lot of, a lot of people at all levels of the organization involved, but we feel like we've moved to the teacher and counselor level, and we're at the point where we're able to both provide supports and that they understand where we're headed, why we're headed there, and how it helps not only the work they're doing in their classroom, but ultimately positively impacts their students. And so as we go through this year, we'll obviously continue our implementation of our action plan. We'll continue to refine our action steps. We continue to work with the district leadership team and with the team at Cary, Dr. Kim Gibbons and Dr. Ellen Swanson, as a support. Our professional learning with our principals in December will be around fidelity of implementation at the regular principal meeting. We'll continue to look at what are our measures to say that we're making progress and that it's having impact on our system and on our students. And then Christine and I already will begin that first week of December, working with them to look forward to say, as we complete this action plan this year, what are the next steps that will ensure that the work continues to be, continues to go deeper but really becomes institutionalized? That we're moving in that direction, that, you know, all teachers understand their role and are implementing the practices and the processes consistently so that all kids are having their needs met in like ways when they have like needs. And so it's good to be at this point. We finally feel like maybe the snowball is starting to roll down the hill, and we've caught some momentum, and we know there's still a lot of work to do. And we've asked a lot of our staff. It's, you know, it's a heavy lift, but people are leaning in, and we're excited about it. So happy to take questions or additional comments.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Chris?
More just a comment. Thank you for the great report. You know, when we started this work so long ago, we could tell the excitement, and it really is, you know, part of the future foundation of education, what we're putting in here, and all the supports. And it's really, I mean, you took all my analogies away. But it really does feel like we're, we've climbed this hill, and now we can start, you know, all school board goals, all goals should, you do the work, and then it gets to be operational. And it just kind of is part of what we do. And I know we're not there yet, and we have tons of work left, but it's starting to feel that way, and it's, it's really exciting. Even though things have improved and we're seeing results already, imagine when it's, the fidelity's all across everything and, you know, and you have kids that spend 13 years in the district and have all of this from start to finish. And it's just really exciting. And thank you to you both for your leadership in this. You can't, you pretty much have to thank everybody in the district. You know, it's a, it's a big lift, so thank you.
Don't be too surprised, but I have two questions. My first question was, so I'm not expecting numbers here, but do you have a gut instinct about whether we are now catching kids that maybe historically we would have missed or that would have kind of fallen through the cracks? Does it feel like we're catching kids sooner so that they can get intervention and be back on track sooner? Or do we not have enough information yet for that?
I think, you know, not having data in front of us, I would say, as we're working with teachers and counselors at the initial phases of intervening sooner and using data and knowing more about what intervention will be most successful and that shared ownership of students, not who can we send them to or what intervention can we put them in, but what can we do instructionally to be more preventative or to respond more quickly? I feel like we've made movement in that area. I don't know, you know, I think we're definitely identifying more students sooner. I would say that academically, and I would say that socially-emotionally as well.
Yeah, I would also say the research around quiet, undiagnosed females who don't flag anywhere else. My Sabers has been a great way to identify or catch them earlier so that counselors can dig in a little bit deeper and maybe have conversations with parents, whether they need a Tier Two intervention or whether it's just a conversation with parents of, have you considered? Because it might just spark conversations. The research is very strong that we often miss quiet girls who often get later identified in life with ADHD or autism. So catching those kiddos.
That was a really good segue to my second question, which was, how is some of this communicated to families? So, I mean, we've talked a lot about how the teachers use it, counselors, but how are parents informed or how is it communicated to parents when their student either needs Tier Two intervention or if they've flagged? Or just, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. At the academic level, teachers through conferences are sharing data and results. And when we're having them, you know, work with an interventionist, we're communicating with parents, and those interventionists are then in communication with those families as well. But I also think teachers are more equipped to talk about what they're doing in the classroom. And although we're in the early stages of that with our literacy work or in that shift with our literacy work, I think that will just become stronger and stronger as we move forward.
And then at the secondary level, if we have identified them for a Tier Two intervention, counselors are sending parent notification home outlining, you know, your student has been identified through Saber screening, additional data points, whether it's grades, attendance, referral, really spelling it out. And we'd like to place them in a, in a Tier Two intervention. We outline what the Tier Two intervention is. And then both EmpowerU and Character Strong have parent information letters. So we send the parent information letter home. It then is an opt-out process for parents, so they're opted in unless the parent says, no, thank you. So we are informing the parents, giving them information. At the high school, for example, we identified 60 students for the first wave of interventions for Tier Two. And I think we had about 42 come the first day, but only two families opted out. That just means the ninth and 10th graders didn't find their way to the intervention. So the next week, then, I think the last eight of them did, did come. So we don't have many families opting out, the ones that, they just had more questions. So making sure we're informing them in a timely manner.
That's really helpful. That was one of my wonderings, was when it had suggestions for the teachers to use, like for the Tier One interventions, I kind of wondered if there was any information presented to families so that they can work on it at home as well? You know, for some of those things, like the parents might want to spend five minutes at night reinforcing or whatnot. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Dan?
Just, thank you both. I, like, having not been in this chair very long, I feel like I've already seen an evolution in how EducLammer's been being presented to us and the sort of data and things that you're able to pull in. So I, I just think it's, it's very cool to see that evolution, see the potential that's there, and I'm glad it's finding increased utilization.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
And that is all for tonight. Thanks, everybody.
So...
So the...